All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call our meeting to order. First item up on our agenda is to approve the agenda as presented. Does anybody have any additions or deletions to the agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented. So we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Moving on to our consent agenda, I'll entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, motion carries. Is that getting too much feedback for you?
A little bit.
Is that any better? Yeah, turn up Merle's, but leave mine low if you don't mind. You good?
All right.
Moving on with Mr. Ray and our financial report.
Everybody should have copies of the June, July, and August, so we are caught up. I'll start with kind of the big picture of June. And we'll start with cash. At June 30th, 2020, we had $3.6 million in cash. That is operating and what's with the city invested. That does not include the million dollar loan that this city took out on our behalf for the addition. So now, from 6/30/2020, I can take you to August and we can be done with the financials very quickly. So we've got a $4.5 million fund balance at June 30th. 4.5 million. If I subtract $500,000 in what I paid for the addition, a little over $500,000 in July and August, and I subtract the month of revenue in BP we don't get in July, remember in BP we only get 10 out of 12 months, that gets me to $3.5 million, which is June 30th about what our cash is, I'm sorry, August 30th, what our cash is, 3.6 million. So I can reconcile fund balance at June 30th all the way to August 30th. There's nothing exceptional that happened in July and August to report on, normal operating expenditures, with the exception of the $500,000 we spent on the building, that's something that doesn't happen all the time. But you have the financial statements. June has a handwritten note on the last page of the General Purpose Fund and the Federal Projects Fund. And it said, I'm adjusting for encumbrances. What that is, is when we open up a purchase order in June, but we don't actually get the items in June, we might get them in July, we might get them in August, theoretically, we don't have a liability at June, so I'm adjusting for that. So that's kind of normal.
Scott, do you want to kind of talk to them about how we've not touched the million dollars?
Yeah, the, there's a- Sure. Yeah, it's, I'm gonna, you know, with the 4.5 million dollar fund balance that we have at June 30th, 2020, does not include the million dollars from the city and the loan. Theoretically, we could say that we have a 5.5 million dollar fund balance. But that's debt, so I'm trying to kind of keep that off to the side. But our cash position-
It's pretty good.
Is pretty, is very good. You know, we can ride out any hiccups in the economy for the next year or two, which we talked about at the last board meeting.
How's taxes appear to be?
Not as bad as I thought. I'm, I know, I tend to be a little doomsday on that. I'd rather plan for the worst and hope for the best. But I, again, I don't think it's gonna, we're gonna see the impact until next year, in 2021, because unemployment is slowing down with the federal supplement to the state unemployment, and that ended in July. I think it's picked back up again slightly, but I would assume, and I don't think they're gonna come out with another stimulus until after the election or after the new year, if it's needed. But tax, sales tax, we are about where we were a year from now, a year ago. So we kind of lost our growth, but we maintained our maintenance of effort, so to speak, which is not bad.
Our internet sales tax came at a very good time.
Yeah, we kind of picked that in, picked up that, and that's probably what's supporting sales tax now. Everybody's, I'm assuming, doing like I am, getting on Amazon, buying stuff. There's a memo that I kind of did the highlights of the year, I guess tooting our horn. In General Purpose Fund at June 30th, we ended the year with a $126,000 surplus. And remember, this COVID issue struck in March, and things changed drastically starting then. We still funded everything that needed to be done, we didn't cut anything. We moved forward with the addition, which is actually, in hindsight, is good, because we now have the space to social distance. And we spent a lot of time and money on remediation for COVID-19 and deaths and sanitizer and all the supplies. Federal projects, we've got our standard title grants as usual, on Title I and Title II. We did get a technology grant for some assistive technology for some CDCA students, or CDC students, and an IDEA state personal development grant called SPDIG. That's kind of new this, last year. Cafeteria Fund, we ended with a surplus of $32,000. That brings our fund balance in cafeteria to $77,000. I guess the item to note there is that is not being supported by the General Purpose Fund anymore. In the past, years, 10, 15 years ago, General Purpose Fund was buying two months of food for the cafeteria fund. And we're not doing that anymore, they are surviving on their own and thriving, because we had a little surplus. And that's gonna get used up for repairs and maintenance on our equipment, but it's nice to have it there. We don't take money out of the classroom. Any questions?
Could you read that last bullet?
Oh, for in honor of Ms. Queener, no meal prices?
Thank you Scott, I appreciate that, I like it.
I put that in there for you.
You're doing a great, you're doing a great job. You're doing a great job.
You know, we only raise them if we have to, and sometimes it's a federal mandate that we raise it.
I understand.
And sometimes economically we might have to, but fortunately, we don't, so.
I have to just brag on what we were able to accomplish in the General Purpose Fund, because it's been a long time since we've just looked at $126,000 rollover. Typically, it has been significantly more than that the past few years. But keep in mind, we got the million dollar loan anticipating that we would pay about $500,000 out of fund balance. And at the end of June 30th, Scott had paid, what, $740,000, $750,000 cash for, for the building. So as of today, he's paid everything cash, and we have not touched that million dollar loan at this point yet. So when you look at that 4.5, that is paying cash through, and then also, we've got the million dollar, the million dollar loan that we will take some from, because we've got several more payments to, payments to make. But Scott has done a really good job of, of trying to pay as much cash as we can for that, to where we don't have undue debt on our hand, hands.
That's a great report.
Any, any questions? I know I kind of threw a lot at you, and I apologize for our last board meeting, I didn't have the financials ready. I wish I could blame somebody else, but it's my fault, so.
Well, if it's good news, it's well worth the waste.
Okay.
If it's been bad news, we don't have a talk.
I like that, that's a good one, eh? We'll go with that.
All right, any further questions or comments for Mr. Ray regarding our financials for June, July, and August? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve our financial report for June, July, and August. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, Kim, could we have a roll call vote, please?
David Queener?
Yes.
Tim Bible?
Yes.
Merle Price?
Yes.
Joey Smith?
Yes.
Curtis is bound.
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on to budget amendment number one.
All right, everybody should have the budget amendment in their board packet. Very briefly, we have a Safe Schools grant of $19,000 and change, and that is gonna be used for a subscription fee for our crisis alert system that we installed last year. I guess it's now, it's two years ago.
Uh, so 7,500 of it will go towards that annual subscription for the buttons, the crisis alert buttons, and then the remaining will go towards South Clinton or Com.
Uh, North Clinton.
North Clinton, North Clinton or Com, yes.
And then I had to do a sales tax increase of $76,000. We kind of just discussed that, I was overly pessimistic. And I like to, when I do a budget amendment, when we know about something, I like to bring it to your attention through a budget amendment as best I can. Some places, they wait till the end of the year and do one big one at the end of the year. I, I just don't like to do it that way, I'll just leave it at that.
But I think it keeps us better informed, so I appreciate the way that you do it.
And that, that brings us also in line with maintenance of effort for budgeting with, the state does an analysis, and that will, that helps us to pass the maintenance of effort testing. And then there's no, no budget amendment for federal projects or cafeteria at this time.
I'll entertain a motion to approve budget amendment number one.
So moved. Second.
And a second, any further questions or comments for Mr. Ray? Kim, could we have a roll call vote, please?
David Queener?
Yes.
Tim Bible?
Yes.
Merle Price?
Yes.
Joey Smith?
Yes.
Curtis is bound.
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on to new business, before the board, we need to elect our delegates for the TSBA convention. As of right now, it is still planned to happen, although anything can, can change at the last minute. Who were the delegates last year?
I was.
Merle and Miss KK?
I was.
I think KK was an alternate.
She was not, me and Merle were.
Do you all want to do it again, or does anybody else, does anybody else like to do it?
I'll do it again, if, if nobody else wants to, I'll do it.
All right. And since KK's not here, let's have her as an alternate.
You could make her a delegate.
Yeah, well, we could make her a delegate, too.
Oh, that's fine.
All right, we'll keep her as an alternate then, and we recommend that you all continue on in that position. I'll entertain a motion to approve those that were listed before.
So moved.
All right, have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Now Curtis, you were, are representative for something last year, what was that? Was that the?
You received information-
Yeah, you were in the, was it the-
Legislature.
Oh, legislature, yeah. Okay, would you want to do that again, do we need to?
Sure.
All right, and then I'll entertain a motion to keep Curtis in his position.
So moved.
So moved, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Since that wasn't in there, I knew we would have to do that later on, so we'll just get that out of the way now. Next item up is to approve on first and second reading our board policy that is revised on the Title IX and sexual harassment.
So this is just a cleanup. You actually approved this policy last month, and when we submitted it to TSBA, they found something that we needed to clean up. We had used two of our central office people, there's actually three positions or duties within this policy. One is a coordinator, one is the investigator, and then one is the decision maker. And we had the same person serving two of those roles, and really, to be real clear cut, to avoid any grievances, it needed to be three different people. So all we did, the policy basically is the same, we just changed the coordinator to Suzanne Oliver's position. The investigator of any grievances will be Lori Collins or whoever is in the curriculum and, curriculum and instruction position. And then the final decision maker will be Dr. Jordan or the assistant director. And then anything beyond that, of course, would come to the board and the director of schools. So that was just a cleanup, just to, to make sure we weren't putting ourselves in a, in a situation that could be further aggrieved.
Any further questions regarding school board policy? All right. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve on first and second reading appendixy of our school board policy. No, have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any further questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. That concludes our new business, we'll move on into reports by principals.
Okay, so we've asked the principals to do a little something different today, just to kind of spice up our board meetings a little bit, since this has been an interesting start to the school year. Instead of throwing a bunch of dates to you and a bunch of teacher professional development information your way, but I asked them to come and answer two questions for you, just to kind of give you a feel for the beginning of school and what the past 24 days of very successful school opening has looked like. And so they're gonna, number one, tell you the reason why they think that opening school was a good idea. And then they're also gonna tell you something, even despite the challenges of COVID and implementing mitigation efforts, something that they can see as a silver lining of how we're gonna come out of this situation better than we entered it. So Ms. Ryle, since you're front here, we'll start with North Clinton.
I was just like, there's no way that anybody could have guessed what was gonna happen, based on everything that we hear and see all the time. I was excited and ready for myself, but I just had no idea what we were to expect. And what we have is happy children, fed children, learning children, and they and their families have something else to focus on other than the current events. When I went in one day to a, they're doing partially lunches in the classrooms as, as we rotate with our partner classes. So I went in to visit with sixth grade class, and I said, okay, you guys, are you really happy to be back here at school? And they shouted yes at me. I said, okay, but are you really happy that you're having to do your classwork? And they shouted yes. And I was floored, because I really expected the second one to be a flat out no. But they were so excited to be back, they're excited about what they're learning, they're excited that they are with their friends and with their, their school teachers. I have never seen that group of students in my entire life smile as much as I have seen them smile. They've missed us and we've missed them. Some silver linings to what we have been through, something I really didn't expect, when we had to figure out how to do the drop off and the new drop off procedures, where I've discovered that we've got a safer procedure in place, so that was good. I don't, I don't, I'm not as worried about the kids having to cross traffic as much within our parking area, so that was a, a plus, because I've always been a little bit nervous about that, so that was really good. And I have been absolutely floored at the growth mindset of our staff, some of whom were a little resistant about some technology. But they have been seeking out technology support, they are doing lessons and assignments on CSOW, which is a program that parents can access and see the work as well, and Google Classroom. They're even forming their own little professional development groups after school, so that they can learn more and show each other some different things that they, they're doing on that. And our Google meets, which we started last year for our morning announcements, we figured out, we normally would have our sixth graders do the announcements, and then we would have our pledge leaders join them. Well, you can't do that if you've got different kids in different grade levels. So we finally figured out how, it forced us to figure out how that our morning announcement people can do their morning announcements, and then if, then if a classroom has recognitions, that teacher can unmute themselves on the Google meet, they can recognize their students in front of the camera, the little view switches over to those students in that classroom, and then it switches back to our announcements, and then it can switch to the pledge leaders in their homerooms. So everybody kind of has a chance to be highlighted, and nobody has to be too close for comfort. So those have been some really exciting and neat things, but just the happiness and our, our teachers are, yes, they're, they're relaxing a little bit, but they are so happy to be back with the kids, and the kids are so happy to be back with the staff, so.
Thank you, Ms. Ryle.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Bunsdill, you can come up and talk about South.
So there were so many things I could share about why it was a good decision to come back to school. I mean, just so many happy faces, so many I love yous just randomly from kids when they walk through the door in the morning. But I know this is a story Kelly knows, because she was there that day, and I think it just touched everybody. So on one of our first staggered days of school, when our sixth graders came, there's one student in particular that I think is very special to all of us, and we all know him, and we're gonna be so sad when he moves on to the middle school. But he was walking up the sidewalk, and there's a particular teaching assistant that he has a really special bond with. And I think that says a lot for our TAs, you know, it's not just the teachers that have these close bonds with the kids, but it's the TAs as well. So he's walking in, and he sees her, and he just breaks into a full-on run, runs through the door, wraps his arms around her, I mean, just the most genuine heartfelt hug you have ever seen. And if you know this kid, he's not, we love him, but he's not one that exudes his joy all the time, but you could just tell how happy he was to see his people and to be back at school. And so I think it's things like that that let us know we did the right thing, we made the right decision. A lot of things have changed, and we've had to be really flexible and change our procedures at South Clinton. So in the past, at dismissal, we would gather all the kids into the gym, and each grade level would have their own area that was designated for them to sit in, and we would call the kids from the gym to go out to the car rider line. But this year, obviously, we don't want to gather all the kids together, so we have them in their homerooms. And it is so calm and quiet, and kids aren't getting in trouble for playing and yelling across the gym to their brothers and sisters. And at first, you know, we were worried, because is this gonna make dismissal, you know, last forever, because they're having to walk from all these different areas in the school? But this week, we've been done by 3:01 or 3:02 every day. So the kids are getting it, and I think they like the calmness in the afternoon, they're there with their teacher and not somebody that they don't know, it's just been really great. And another thing that I think we all really loved were the staggered days at the beginning of the year, because it was just a really calm start to the school year. It gave the teachers, the two grade levels that were there, the opportunity to kind of just have the whole school to themselves, to show the kids around, go over procedures, I mean, just non-stressful start to the year with everything going on. And I just want to brag on just my school, everybody, the teachers, the TAs, the custodians, the cafeteria workers, the kids, and the families. We've had some hard situations come up, we, I've had to have some hard conversations, we've had to be very flexible and change a lot of our thinking, but I could not ask for sweeter, better people to work with on a day-to-day basis. So I'm very lucky to be at South Clinton, and I just want to brag on them, because they're doing a great job, so.
Thank you, Ms. Bunsdill.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Sharp?
It's funny how much of a family we are, because so many things that I wrote down that I wanted to brag on, they just did too. So that just tells you how close-knit we are, not only in our schools, but our school system. So I definitely know we did the right thing by opening, and you can tell it by the children's emotions and how supportive we are. We have a child who didn't want to come to school, she got used to staying home with her mom, she has anxiety. And, you know, we called after she'd been absent a few days, and the mom said, well, she's having a little anxiety, you know, and we were like, okay, she still needs to come to school. But then the mom just broke down on the phone and said, I really need help, I need the help. It's, you know, she was kind of dependent on her child. And so it was funny, because we were kind of talking about it in the office, and Jacqueline got involved, Ariel got involved. So it's not only our kids that need us, but really, our community truly does depend on us. So it was nice to be able to help out, not only the child, but really, probably, the whole family. And then our sixth graders, also sixth grade, had written some COVID acrostics. But before they did, the teacher said, you know, if you could tell your, your teacher one thing about you during COVID, what would it be? And we really didn't know the types of answers that we would get, but I brought some of them to read to you all, and then this will just show you how much they needed us. One said they had really missed their grandfather, so if you see me sad one day, that's why. They needed that emotional support. This summer was good, except my dad and my stepmom are getting a divorce. I have been having anxiety, and sometimes I get really nervous, she depends on the teachers. I have a half-brother, and we just found out about it a week ago, and he's 18. I had a lot of things in my garage, but it burnt down in a fire, so we lost lots of things. Something I wish my teacher knew about me is how much I love her, because she was with me, along with Ms. Webb and the Blaze team, through some really hard times, and I'll never forget that. So that just shows you how open these kids, they're just dying and reaching out for somebody to talk to, and how much they depend on and love their teachers. So we're, we're very fortunate to be in person in school. Good news, things that have been great, other than being able to be there for the kids and seeing them happy, our dismissal, also, we did a Google meet, and it is a thousand times better, and it is much safer. We also changed our assemblies to virtual, and all the teachers said, we love it. It gets a little chaotic in the auditorium when you first go in, but the kids listen, and when you're in there and you're calling out student of the month, you know, we're always like, hold your applause to the end. Well, this way, their, their people got to cheer for them, so that was nice. And then I just want to brag on my school also, I had written down collaboration on things, and I think I talked about it at the last meeting. But usually, you know, everybody is tired, and I know everybody is stressed, and, you know, on a typical year, you might have to go and say, I really need you to do this duty this afternoon, or I really need you to do this. And without hesitation, they are volunteering to do things with a smile on their face, no complaining at all. They just know it has to be done to make the school successful and the kids happy. So it's been nice to see everybody just really, you know, be leaders too, so, thank you.
Ms. Sharp?
Thank you.
Ms. Kidwell, do you have anything you'd like to add? Not to put you on the spot, but I just know you have been, number one, she did a fabulous job on the news last night, if you did not hear her, she is very, very well spoken in front of the camera, and really represented not only our district, but the state of Tennessee and education and schools reopening in general. She did a great job.
I was, when we were talking about this, I sat in Ms. Murphy's room and read some of the acrostics these kids wrote. And what they did is, they wrote, on the front, it said Corona, and on the back, it said COVID. And it was one word for each or one phrase for each. Some of them were very poetic, which was just exemplary of just who these kids are. And what it showed me, I remember going home and telling Brad, it's, you could see the way this information was filtered to kids for so many months through these words. Like, some kids were at home where the news was never turned off, and they were privy to everything, they were privy to all, and it just fed their fear, and you could see it come out in their words and their thoughts. And then you could see the difference in kids who were at home with a little more hope, where parents were saying, you know, it's, it's where we are now, but it's not where we're gonna be, we're gonna keep going. You could see such a contrast, and I kept thinking, this is why we needed to open our school. This is why public schools needed to be open, this is why kids needed to sit and be with their teachers, because they needed a place to write all this down and then say, here, like, help me sort through five months of the news never being turned off in my house, or five months of being, never being able to leave. So it was, it was super eye-opening to me to see, because I've been, you know, it's been great to see kids back and have the building feel normal. I think Ms. Sharp told Commissioner yesterday, we've had folks even just say to hear kids out on the playground for the first time. It's just, it feels normal, and when everything else around everybody, everything else doesn't, it's like you walk in, and it's like, schools, we're doing it, school's normal, so, feels good. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. We're gonna enjoy Ms. Kidwell for maybe October, but then maybe-
but then baby number two is going to be coming our way in November. So she'll take a little hiatus for a few short weeks. Mid-November, mid-November, for a few short weeks. That concludes principal's reports.
All right, just take note, the TSBA meeting for the fall district meeting is going to be virtual. And so if you would like to virtually tune in, you can do that September the 15th. Next school board meeting will be here October the 8th. And of course, our conference in Nashville, as of right now, is still, still scheduled. That concludes reports and information. We'll move on to our director's report.
Okay, just a few quick Clinton City updates. You have a director's report in front of you. As you all know, Commissioner Penny Schwinn visited Clinton Elementary School yesterday. We were also honored to have David Donaldson, the Assistant Commissioner of Human Capital. And then Dale Lynch, our Executive Director of TOS, joined us as well. So she clearly went straight for the children and I didn't think we were ever going to get her out of the kindergarten classroom. They were, they were finding multiple ways to make five with red and white counters. And she just plopped herself right down beside kids and started having conversations about the multiple ways to make five. And I wasn't real sure we were going to ever get to classroom number two. But we did visit several different classrooms. She got to see the new addition to the building. And she got to see our intervention classes that we, that we had built for RTI. Overall, she was very, very complimentary at the end, was very, very impressed with our reopening plan, very impressed that we had had 24 days, 23 days yesterday, of solid instruction with minimal disruptions. And just was very, very impressed with the level of engagement of our kids and the rigor of the instruction that she saw. So that was, that was a great chance to showcase Clinton City Schools. Our addition is up and running. So the four intervention rooms, Jenna and Abby have moved TAs into those. And so they each have their own intervention room at this point. And so the other four rooms are occupied. We've moved, she moved music down there. Guidance, we were unable to socially distance in that small room. So we moved guidance down there. And then we moved technology. So technology classes will start the second nine weeks and it was impossible for Ms. Burton to spread out in her current technology room. And then the fourth room, we have turned into our teacher PD room for now so that we can continue to hold face to face teacher meetings and professional development with grade levels. But with, it's large enough to where we can socially distance and stay within the six feet apart to where we're not creating close contacts. So it is simply, it is simply beautiful. Scott Ray has done an amazing job overseeing that project. As you know, I sent you all the information that the quilt that the two art teachers made with our students back in 2019, when we held our arts showcase at the Kincaid House. Each school made one piece of the quilt in Clinton Elementary due to the size, made two pieces of the quilt, to where it is a four-piece square quilt representing Clinton Elementary, North Clinton Elementary, South Clinton Elementary and Central Office. And Scott and Sarah Ray so graciously purchased that quilt in a, through a silent auction that night and then turned around and donated it right back to Clinton City Schools. And so it's been sitting and we've been waiting for the perfect place to hang it. We've been waiting for inspiration. And so Scott Ray was actually the one who came up with the idea of, let's put it on this wall of the new Clinton Elementary addition. It just seems very fitting. And so it's hanging on the addition right now. And Allison Swanner wrote and Joey helped her kind of compose the, of why the, this would be a great location to be chosen for the Appalachian Quilt Trail. And Joey did a fantastic job of showcasing the historical pieces of Clinton and, you know, what all people who came to see this quilt, they would also benefit from many other areas in Clinton. And so really by two or three days later, we were approved. And so we are now officially a member of the Appalachian Quilt Trail. And so that is, that's just super neat. And the kids who were able to paint that now, I mean, it's just, it's just amazing that it represents all four areas of Clinton City Schools, but the kids were the one who did it. So super proud of that. Also, we found out this week that Aiden Yarborough and Madison Reynolds are two sixth grade teachers. And as you know, in, in sixth grade in Clinton City Schools, you do lots of STEM, STEM and science activities. And so we, they were challenged with, to run their own experiment to see if antibacterial gel, antibacterial soap, or regular soap was more effective in killing bacteria. And very timely, very timely. So they were given four P2 dishes, they worked in groups to discover and then they had to do a visual presentation of, of the results that they found. Well, Aiden and Madison decided to go one step further and actually submit their experiment to the ORAU STEM competition. And so out of the whole entire STEM competition, two winners in the grades of six through eight cohort, they awarded two winners and abigali both of them won. And so both of the winners in that age group actually were Clinton City Schools students. And so we congratulated them yesterday and let them have a little individual meet and greet with Penny Schwinn and got their picture made with her. And they just, Madison was still just glowing about that today. She was, she was so excited. We started our sixth grade Chrome Home Program this week. So sixth grade students, if they meet the criteria of showing that they're responsible and can take care of the Chromebook, then they are allowed to take those Chromebooks home with them at night. They have the responsibility of charging that at home and bringing it back to school, charge for school the next day. So we're excited to pilot that. I still think that it's just very ironic that we were going to pilot this program and we worked hard to get all the criteria ready for sixth grade pilot program this year. Little did we know that we were going to be implementing it system wide with massive school closures in the spring of last year. So, but the sixth graders are excited about that. And then I just want to take a moment to give, we, we can do shout outs from now until, you know, now until Christmas of everybody and the wonderful job that they have done. But through this school reopening, I think one of the biggest burdens has been placed on our school nurses. The health department, you know, the CDC and the health department is forever, you know, there, there's constant changes as we learn more about how to react to this situation. They're having to stay abreast of changes or have to be flexible and change at the last minute. But number two, the burden is really on their shoulders to try to make a determination whether the symptoms warrant staying at school or whether the symptoms warrant going home. And if it goes home, does it warrant a COVID test before we're allowed back in school? And our school nurses frankly have really been put smack dab in the middle between the health department and pediatricians. And it has not always gone smoothly. The majority of the parents have been very kind, but they're hearing one thing from the health department, they're hearing another thing from the pediatricians. And then our school nurses are left to try to decipher and mediate. And so I could not be more proud of Kristen King, Amanda May and Katie Hernandez. They have just done a remarkable job taking care of our kids, fielding phone calls, being proactive, trying to keep possible exposures out of the classroom to where we're not exposing kids and having to quarantine, to where we're able to take more of a proactive approach. But they are top quality and they're doing it with a smile on their face. But it, this has not been an easy, an easy task for them just because the COVID symptoms are so much like seasonal allergies. They're like a cold, they're like a sinus infection. And so trying to make those determinations of keeping kids in school as much as possible, but making sure that we're sending them home when we need to, has been quite challenging. But very blessed to have them. And then I want to give a huge shout out to Dr. Jordan as well. She has kind of taken the, the reins with our virtual learning program, which has really taken on a life of its own. We started off with 12 to 13% of our population on virtual. That is now down to 64 students, which represents about, about 7% of our population. And she, you know, we worked really, really hard to craft this date, you know, mandated that it be a seven hour a day program at home, which kind of changed the game from what we were used to in the fall. But edginess is hard. I mean, it is not, it, it is, it is a very rigorous online curriculum. But based on our parent surveys, we heard that there was a wide variety of, and it depended on teachers' comfort level with technology. Some teachers were doing an abundance of instruction in the spring and some really were only doing student check ins. And it's all because we were just trying to learn our way. So one of the things that really came clear in that survey was more instruction online. We want more consistency with the instruction online and edginess does that. And we didn't want to put our children in a situation where if the parents needed them to stay home and do virtual, that they pop back into school significantly behind. So this has been, I mean, I'm proud to say that it's a challenging program. It has been hard on the learning partners who have helped the children oversee it. But it has been very demanding of the children as well. But I feel confident when these children pop back in with us, when the time is appropriate, that they, that they'll be right up to speed with where they need to be and they won't feel the stress of trying to catch up. So, and then last, I just have to say that we're on day 24. And I don't think I've ever counted the days of the beginning of the year before, but I'm just so stinking proud of our staff and how we have been able to successfully reopen school. We really did not know going into this what we were going to be facing. We really didn't know, are we truly going to be able to pull this off? I know that lots of, lots of positive thoughts, lots of prayers have gone into the decision to reopen. But we are on day 24 with very, very, very minimal disruptions. And our teachers are fighting hard, our kids are fighting hard, our parents could not be better. I mean, we've looked at them and basically said, we, we, we love you, but we're not letting you in our buildings. We're not going to let you come meet with your kids. And they have embraced that, you know, they're keeping their kids home when they're sick. We are not seeing a huge plethora of the after lunch fever spikes that we so often have seen in the past. So I think parents are really proud that we have been able to keep schools open with minimal disruption. And I think there's a sense of responsibility on families' parts because they know they play a significant part in helping us stay open. So truly, when I look at other school systems, everybody is fighting hard. It's, it's hitting different communities in, in different ways and schools are pulling together. But I cannot begin to even tell you how proud I am of our staff, students and community and, and what we're able to do keeping schools open. So our kids need to be in school, we're going to preach that. And the other piece of exciting news I do want to tell you is I did receive an email today from the U.S. Department of Education, from the Director of Intergovernor, Governmental Relations. And she said that she had heard about Clinton City Schools reopening plan and our success in reopening. And that she was interested in us sending her information about our plan and our successful reopening so that they could do a shout out from the U.S. Department of Education on their website and social media. So, I mean, that's pretty cool. So we will certainly work on getting her that. And hopefully, we can just show, show nationally the good work that our, that our staff is, staff is currently doing. Yes. So any questions for me? Leg kick, Jenny? Are you in for a leg kick today?
Nobody joined my applause, so.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that. In fact, that concludes my report.
All right. Anything else anyone would like to add? Great things are still happening in Clinton City Schools. And it's just an honor that even across the nation, people are taking note of our little tiny school system. But we're doing great things.
We are small but mighty. Or fasty one, I don't know which one.
Without anything else, I'll declare this meeting adjourned.